Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call the informational meeting of April 20th, 2021 to order. Welcome to those watching online, in person, or on TV. All counselors are present and accounted for, so we're going to forego a roll call today. First up, council remarks. Anyone with council remarks today? Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. Our first presentation is External Audit Results: A Public Parking Enterprise Risk Assessment, and that's presented by Aid Bailey, Derek Flanagan, Joy Feige, and Kristin Taffey, I believe. So I think we'll welcome Joy up to kick us off, and then we'll go to the other.
Good afternoon. I'm Joy Feige with Aid Bailey, Sioux Falls Office, and I am here to present Derek Flanagan and Kristin Taffey. And they were the primary individuals working on this project, which was the financial modeling project relating to the public parking enterprise fund. So just a little bit of background on Derek and Kristin. Derek is an audit partner out of our Fargo office, and he specializes in governmental industry. And then Kristin is a senior manager in our Business Valuations Specialty Services Department, and they both have a background on forecasting and projections. So with that, I am going to turn it over to those two to walk you through the PowerPoint presentation at this time.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Derek, do you want to start it off? Do we have? Do we have Aid Bailey present? I think I heard him click in. Somebody muted? Wait and see here. And while we're waiting, is somebody else bringing up the presentation as well? We're going to run the slides. Okay.
Derek, can you hear us?
Derek or Kristin? Looks like we have Derek on.
Yes.
There you are. We can hear you.
I could. Okay. I couldn't hear anything previous. I think maybe you were muted, so.
Our apologies. We are. We're ready to go. Joy started us off, so.
All right. Well, I will. I'm trying to wait for Kristin to get back on. She was on previously, and I think she was maybe having some trouble with her settings, so she's just trying to get those situated.
Okay.
And Derek, this is Joy. So I've done introductions of both you and Kristin at this point.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, I will stall while she gets on. My name is Derek Flanagan. Joy previously introduced me. I am a partner here in the Fargo office. Excited to give you a presentation today on the public parking procedures that we, the analysis that we performed. And we're going to go through the same PowerPoint that we went through previously with the audit committee. And I'm going to start things off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Kristin for really the bulk of the analysis. And then I'm going to put a bow on it at the very end. And if you just want to ask questions, we'll try to pause between slides and give you some opportunity there. Or if you prefer to ask questions at the end, we're more than happy to do that as well. So a little bit of an overview on how we got to this point. In response to the risk assessment RFP, we proposed providing a financial model that would include three different scenarios, with one of them being a break-even scenario on the parking enterprise as a whole. And Kristin, you can advance to the next slide, please.
Okay.
This was done under the cash basis of accounting and therefore does not include noncash items such as depreciation. So keep that in mind. We did the bulk of this through conversations with management and the use of historical information that was provided to us. At the conclusion, we created a memo as a deliverable to detail out the key information related to those scenarios. We were engaged to perform consulting procedures regarding this analysis, and we are not offering any assurance on the models or the achievability of these scenarios. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Kristin to walk through that scenario development.
Thanks, Derek. So as Derek said, we developed a financial model under three different scenarios, which we have identified as Scenario One: Lower Usage; Scenario Two: Higher Usage; and Scenario Three: Break-Even. Lower usage and higher usage are based on historical occupancy data. The scenario development was largely driven by revenue inputs. So there are five revenue-generating line items that we considered. The first two are ramp and lot revenue. Those were the largest drivers for these models. Ramp and lot revenue were based on historical occupancy data. We considered prior year data, including the highest year in 2019, or a high year in 2019, and then the volatility and lower results of 2020. We also worked in known rate increases for leasing those ramps and lots. For example, the $2 increases in monthly lease rates in 2021 and 2022, and the $1 increase in monthly lease rates in 2023 through 2025. Another item was other parking lot leases. These were really a stable stagnant amount in each scenario, and they just really, the ones that go in there are 100% occupancy for nominal fee, including the maintenance building and the diner lease. And then we have metered parking, which was based on historical percentage of lots and ramps revenue. So 30% of ramp and lot revenue. And then enforcement was calculated based on historical percentage of lots, ramp, and meter revenue, and that was 25%. So we utilized the same assumptions for other parking lot leases, metered parking, and enforcement. And so the big drivers were ramp and lot revenue based on occupancy. In terms of expenses, we were provided with management's projection along with other historical data, and we were given the opportunity to ask questions of management. We used the projection as a starting point for year-one expenditures. We did vary a little bit from that budget. We grew a few expenses by a 3% rate instead of 2% in year-over-year growth. We did utilize the same growth expectation of 4% in terms of wages and benefits. And then in our modeling, we kept repairs and maintenance and the capital expenditures line item equal to what management projected. Those are based on known repairs and purchases required, and therefore we have used their projection as opposed to a percentage of revenue or a year-over-year growth rate. Debt obligations were from the loan amortization schedule, and the available cash balance was based on the 2019 CAFR and then cash rolled forward. So first, I'll go over Scenario One. Scenario One is the lower-usage scenario. We focused on the usage experienced in 2020. For ramps, year-one or 2021 is based on the lowest occupancy month of 2020. The Mall Avenue ramp and the First Avenue ramp are based on the rates from October to December 2020. For 2022 or year-two, it's based on the average occupancy for 2020 overall. We consider this to be like a bridge or a growth year. And then in 2023 through 2025, we assume a return to 2019 numbers. We set the Mall Avenue ramp at that point at 70% and the First Avenue ramp to 65%. For lots in year-one or 2021, the lowest occupancy was, we utilized the lowest occupancy numbers from 2020. 2022 was ramping up from 2020 but still below 2019. And 2023 through 2025 assumed a return to 2019 numbers. On this slide, you can see what that means in terms of revenue, operating expenditures, debt service, and total profit. And then the impact to the available cash balance. So this excludes that required cash-on-hand amount of, I believe it's $1.8 million, as noted by the bond indenture. The findings from this are that there is a loss in each year of the analysis, which does draw on the available cash balance. The trend is nearly to a break-even by the year 2025. And at that point, there is still a bit of cash to support operations. The growth in inflationary expenditures and debt service obligations outpaces the growth in revenue. So even with that changing occupancy and those known rate increases. This scenario indicates the available cash balance will be enough to support operations through the five-year period, even with losses in each year. However, there is a declining cash balance, and there may be additional need for cost-cutting measures. This does not take into consideration any additional cost-cutting measures, and instead, the big drivers here are just that revenue number. Scenario Two is the higher-usage scenario, and this is based largely on the higher usage experienced in 2019. For ramps, in year-one or 2021, the numbers are based on the average occupancy of 2020 as opposed to those lower months. The Mall Avenue ramp and the First Avenue ramp are each set to occupancy of 65%. So that's more growth for the First Avenue ramp as compared to Scenario One. It's important to note that in both Scenario One and Scenario Two, we did consider that the opening of the Mall Avenue ramp is likely to reduce occupancy in the First Avenue ramp. And therefore, historical data for First Avenue was not utilized. The years 2022 through 2025 represent a return to 2019 numbers, except for those ramps described above. The Mall Avenue ramp and the First Avenue ramps are set to 70% occupancy in 2022, and then 75% from 2023 through 2025. We did not set either to 100% occupancy in any of the scenarios we'll discuss today. The lots were assumed to be a return to 2019. Overall, the lots were already trending towards that direction towards the end of 2020. So this is what that scenario looks like in terms of numbers. You can see that revenue goes from $3 million to $3.6 million over the five-year period, and we start with a negative, or an operating loss in 2021. And after that, we do have growing profitability from 2022 through 2025. This profitability has a positive impact on growing the cash balance. There is volatility in the profitability, given the expenditures are growing at a faster pace than the revenue changes. So the inflationary year-to-year expenditure increases are often greater than the expected rate increases. And then we have debt service payments that, as you can see, have a bit of volatility as well. The last scenario we developed is the break-even scenario. And in the break-even scenario, our goal was to set revenues equal to total expenditures and then review what that meant in terms of, is this revenue amount feasible? Or I shouldn't say feasible. What does this revenue amount mean compared to prior information? So what we saw in this analysis is that we first identified the typical breakout of rent revenue. Ramps typically account for 50% of total revenue, lots 10% of total revenue. Others, a known amount, and the meters and enforcement are a percentage of ramps, lots, and meters. We reviewed the implied occupancy numbers based on the weighted monthly cost. And what we identified for ramps is that the implied occupancy would be below 2019 occupancy, which makes sense, given the new ramp openings and the impact on the First Avenue ramp. And for the lots, it appears to be higher occupancy than historical, but that could be partially due to the breakout in revenue. Our findings in this scenario is that the revenue in year-one necessary to achieve a break-even scenario is greater than what was noted in both Scenario One and Scenario Two. The next slide is management's projection, and we've provided that just for your information. This was used to gain background in understanding how the expenses work for these operations, and it was a starting place for our inputs. We did not perform a separate analysis specific on their occupancy drivers. What we did note is that there is a quicker return to normal than what we noted in some of our scenarios. However, the profitability of our Scenario Two was greater than year-two and year-three of management's projections.
So as I mentioned, I would put the bow on it at the end, and this is the last slide. So some other notes of consideration. Usage was the key input that we modified under the different scenarios. And Kristin mentioned this previously, but we did not include other potential initiatives that management could incorporate, such as cost-control measures. And the reason behind that is that we didn't want there to be too many moving pieces. That would make the scenarios more difficult to understand, and comparability would be very difficult. Once you start moving multiple inputs, then it becomes, where do you draw the line? And so we really wanted to make sure that there was some comparability and understandability to the different scenarios that we created. Now, with that being said, the parking enterprise does not operate in a static environment, meaning they can adapt with the times, and if there are lower-usage times, they can incorporate various measures for cost-cutting purposes. And/or the opposite, in times of higher usage, you know, additional projects can be undertaken in terms of repairs and maintenance and things of that nature. So keep that in mind, that you're not operating in a static environment, but this analysis in order for understandability and comparability, we really wanted there to be just one major usage or key input, excuse me, that we would modify in the different scenarios. And so that is the last slide. I thank you for your time, and I would open it up to questions at this point.
Thank you, Kristin and Derek. Let's open it up to questions. And I would note, four of the eight counselors are also on the audit committee, so they have heard this once. They may or may not have questions, follow-ups. So anyone with questions? Or comments? Looking. Going once? Twice? Looks like there's no comments. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. You guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our second item, March 2021 Financial Results, presented by Director Sean Pritchett. Welcome.
Good afternoon, counsel. Glad to be back again for the second week in a row this week. We get to talk about 2021. So we have wrapped up 2020 and get an opportunity here to introduce our first monthly financial statements for the year. And we'll do that by starting and looking at those economic indicators again. And we won't focus a lot of time on some of these, but just highlight them very briefly. We're continuing on the labor force side to see a general increase in employment numbers since November of 2020. They've been up about 0.74% from last year at this time, but they're down about 1.8% since they peaked back in June of last year. If you take a look at unemployment, we uptick just a little bit from the year-end number we talked about last week, but still very low, holding at 3.2% in February of 2021. This is the exact same figure that we had in February 2020 and February of 2019. So you can see we're at the same point in terms of low unemployment that we were in the prior two years, and certainly down from the peak that we were at 10.5% back in April of 2020. From a national level, we were at about 6.6% unemployment. So you can see we're about 3.4% lower than we are here in Sioux Falls than we are the rest of the nation. Inflation, you can see we were at almost net zero there in 2020 for a while, and that has risen to 2.6% in March. That is up from 1.7% in February, 1.4% in January. I would caution you on that figure, though. There's a few unusual things that are occurring in terms of the inflationary market right now, and that in particular has to do with energy. So you can see energy was negative for a good portion of 2020. It really spiked, if you look at the individual months here, and this doesn't necessarily reflect that as much, but it spiked in March. And if you remember or recall, we had those high energy prices occurring because of the Texas and the energy grid issues that they were occurring. So whether that continues to last going forward will yet to be seen, and how, I think, the April numbers will be a little bit more telling in that regard. But we certainly did see an uptick in terms of the inflation rate in March in particular. As far as building permits in 2021, the story is a continuation of what we saw in the latter half of 2020 in terms of being a record-setting year. We've had about $213 million in building permit valuations through March of 2021, year-to-date. That's tracking about $109 million ahead of where we were last year. So we're looking at about 100% increase in building permit values in the first quarter of this year. That's driven primarily by the new commercial values, which are up 138%. And part of this is manufacturing, which is up $2 million, which is good to see. But as you're well aware, probably in reading various news stories, predominant portion of this is related to apartments, which there's about $49 million that we are up in terms of multifamily so far through this portion of the year. We are down $8.7 million in office and institution and educational. Continue to be down 4.2 million year-to-date, strip malls, hotels, and restaurants. So both of those were very much down during the pandemic, and that's a trend that seems to be continuing here as we go into 2021. But if you look at those housing permit units, the number of units, this really highlights the amount of activity that is occurring locally in regard to housing. Permits for new housing units were up overall 290% through March, over March of 2020. This is driven primarily by the multifamily sector, but we are also seeing significant growth in the single-family units. So through March of 2021, we have had 187 single-family housing units. That compares to 78 at the same time last year. So we're up about 72% there. We have issued 463 multifamily units permits. That's up 448 from last year, so essentially up 3,000%. So we had a lot of multifamily units that were permitted last year, but a lot of that took place in the latter half of the year. So we're certainly seeing that activity continuing on into 2021. Even duplexes are higher than what we had seen through this point last year. As far as sales taxes, you can see that month-over-month, for the month of March, we were up 3.3%. That's coming off of two fairly strong months in January and February at 6.8 and 7.4. So it's the first time we have seen that three months in a row of strong activity in sales taxes in quite some time, as we, of course, seen much volatility as a result of the pandemic. Of course, our 12-month rolling average dropped to negative 0.8%. This is not surprising, given where we were at in the latter part of last year. But we will expect this to turn around here over the next several months. You can see April, May, June, particularly May and June, were some of the worst months that we experienced last year. So our month-over-month is going to look fairly significant, I would expect, over the next several months, if we even stabilize. That's not to say that we'll be at previous values or seeing growth, so we'll have to just be careful as to how we interpret those, because you're interpreting them against very negative numbers for the prior year. So as we start going through the year, I think the rolling indicator, the 12-month average, is the one that you're going to be wanting to watch closely, and will be the telling amount of where we might end for the year. But certainly, we've seen some positive activity as it relates to sales taxes. And if you just look at this year alone, for the first three months, we're up approximately 6% year-to-date. So that kind of lets you know where we're at just in that first quarter of the year. The entertainment tax is a little bit of a different story. It does remain volatile. We were down 8.6% over March of 2020, in the current March of 2021. And we have to remember that these are related to February transactions. So we're always about two months behind in the type of activity that we're seeing occurring here. The positive thing is, in February, we did actually see positive growth in the entertainment tax. This is the first time we've seen that happen since the beginning of the pandemic. So there's certainly some momentum going here. Again, even more significant reductions occurred with this sales tax, this base in terms of April, May, and June of last year. So you're going to see fairly significant increases occur here over the next several months. And I just caution you that we do need to try to normalize those against what's normal in, say, 2019 as opposed to what that month-over-month growth really looks like. If you look at the entertainment tax base, restaurants, again, they represent at least 50% of the total sales tax base. And they're coming close to breaking even to where they were in about 2019. And so we've certainly seen some improvement in that area. Lodging is showing some improvement. We'll talk about this in a few moments, but it's still lagging behind. This is something that was shared with you when we distributed the monthly report, but these are the top 10 sectors that we look at on an industry basis. And again, these are from February transactions for the month of March. But these 10 industries, they represent about 60% of our total sales tax base. And that industry-sector data does provide some interesting insights into what's happening in the local economy. Certainly, travel, entertainment options, not surprisingly, are continuing to lag and struggle, particularly lodging and drinking establishments. And then the same sort of trending that we saw during the pandemic in terms of large department stores, general merchandise stores, groceries, sporting goods, gas stations, liquor. All of those continue to fare well. Eating establishments were only down 1% when you looked at the general sales tax base. So definitely see some positive activity there. And then remote retailer sales continue to grow at a pretty aggressive rate between the 22% and 31% over the last several months. The next several charts are some new data that we're providing this month from a different data source that we're receiving. So when we're looking at sales tax data, we're almost two months behind in actually seeing what's happening. So what you're seeing here is a source that we've been looking at and just piloting to see if it provides some value. But it does provide a little bit more in terms of trending of where things might be going, because it's updated on a daily and weekly basis. And this is based on more credit card data, and so they're able to get the data more quickly and able to provide us. Now, you can't translate this as being a direct predictor of where sales taxes were going necessarily, but it's certainly going to be part of the story or the narrative of what's happening in the local economy. And so I think I wanted to share a few of these, just so you could see here. And this compares the last three years. So if you take a look at this, that yellow line there, that's 2021, and this is for all spending categories. And keep in mind, this can include taxable and non-taxable goods. And so that's why it's not a real perfect predictor of sales taxes. So you have to keep in mind, this is all things that have been purchased with credit cards and so forth. But you can see the pink line is 2020, and 2019 is the blue line there. And the positive thing that you're seeing is, we were pretty much breaking even with what we saw in 2020 and 2019 for the first several months of the year. And then you can start seeing the yellow line starting to grow above 2019 levels. And you can start seeing 2020 starting to dip as the pandemic was starting to take effect. So there may be some positive activity that you're starting to see out there. The one area that has been robust and strong through the whole thing has been retail. And you can see that displayed in this graph as well. Our 2021 activity continues to exceed that of 2019 and that of 2020 as well. So this retail activity has been particularly strong and really has supported the sales tax base as we've gone through the pandemic. If you look at restaurants and bars in terms of where they are trending, you can see exactly pretty much what our sales tax data is showing is that we're almost close to normalizing there. We're not quite where we were at 2019 levels. And then you can really see that dip in 2020 of what happened in the pandemic as those sales began to drop in those restaurant and bar industries in that recovery period that occurred later in the year. And then the other one, of course, that's been really impacted by the pandemic, airline hospitality and car rentals. And interestingly, you can see here, we're still lagging behind 2019 levels. We were even lagging by the pre-pandemic 2020 levels, and we seem to be kind of trailing with 2020. So it is definitely a lagging industry overall in terms of its recovery as a result of the pandemic. And then lastly, you can see the entertainment and recreation trending. And again, you really see the impact of that pandemic in the pink line there as it goes to almost zero spending in the months of March and April of 2020. And you start seeing in 2021, you know, we're very stable. We're not at 2021 levels, but it's very stable to where we were in the earlier parts of the year. And so that's going to result in certainly some growth in the entertainment tax if you compare it to last year, but it may not equate to the type of receipts we were seeing the year before. Lodging tax, very similar to what we've seen in the past. There's been no major changes here. Small improvements are occurring, but it's very slow and a lackluster recovery as that industry has really been impacted, particularly by the lack of business travel conventions and so forth. Certainly, they're living primarily off of that weekend, travelers and some of the weekend traffic that they're receiving. And we'll expect that recovery will happen quite a bit over the summer months as that travel season heats up. But I think it will kind of retract again as we get into the latter part of the year. I don't know if there's necessarily a silver lining for this industry, but I think one thing we can take care in is that as badly as we performed to the thing we can take care in is that as badly as we performed to the last year, we certainly were in a much better position than our counterparts and peers in the rest of the Upper Midwest. Took a look at some data that compares us to Omaha, St. Paul, Rochester, Des Moines, and Fargo, just to name a few of the communities. And if you looked at our March occupancy rates, if you just look at the month of March, or you look at us year-to-date, we were the first amongst all of those. So we were running occupancy rates of about 58%. The lowest one in that group was St. Paul, not surprisingly, which was at 34%. And you can say, well, that's a factor of what you charge for those rooms, too, and you start having those, what's your average actual revenue per room? But Sioux Falls led in that regard as well, with an average of $48 per room compared to Sioux Falls, which was an average of $27 per room. That's occupied and unoccupied units. So that's the average across all their units. And we were even ahead of Rapid City, which was at 39. So very positive from that respect. I think that has to do with a lot of the policies that have been put forward from the city and just promotion and marketing and just being real active in that regard. So it's been a tough time for that industry, but certainly we've been a little bit better positioned than some of our peers. And of course, the bid taxes followed very much the lodging tax. And as you're aware, these, these are not receipts that the, the city keeps, they transfer over to the CBB. They're continuing to lag behind, the bid is improving a little bit faster than, say, the lodging taxes. So we're seeing some, some improvements there. Lastly, just talking about revenues and expenses, so where we're at, not surprisingly, based on where we're at with sales tax data that you've seen for the first three months of the year, we're, we're looking pretty decent in terms of overall revenues. We're at about 17% of our total budget collected at this time of year, and that equates very similarly to where we were the last two years, at 16%. So we're in a good position there overall for revenues, property taxes so far coming in within expectations as well. So we're at a pretty good position there. And then if you take a look at expenses here, you can see that we're actually have expended 200,000, only about $200,000 more than where we were last year. We're at 20% of our overall budget expended. That is through March. That compares to 21% last year. So again, we're very much in line with our budgeted expectations. We've had some savings there, and you can see those are primarily going to be in highways and streets, and that's driven by a lot of the snow budget and so forth, which, lack of snow in the early parts of this year, similar to the latter part of last year. So that is all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen.
Mr. Chair, thanks. Director, in the retail trending, you know, the new graph that you're showing, does that include online sales as well?
I don't know. And so this data source, it's a little bit new to us, and we're piloting, so I don't know exactly where they're, they're bringing their data in from. So it's probably some, one question I'd like to ask, should ask them about.
Counselor Samuel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Pritchard, the lodging tax receipts, you were going pretty quickly, and I think you lost me, when you talked about costs of rooms, $27, $39, could you take another run at that for me, please?
Sure. So when you look at hotels, you have your average daily rate, and then you have your revenue per average room. So your average daily rate is the average rate they're charging on an occupied room. So your, so your, your revenue per average room, or your RevPAR, is essentially taking your, how much your ADR, your average daily rate that you're collecting, so your total revenues by your occupancy rate and dividing it across the entire, all of your rooms. And so it's basically telling you all your rooms, whether they were occupied or unoccupied, what was your average revenue for that month. So you could essentially take the, the, say, we were at $48, you take it by the total number of rooms that you have for your hotel times 30 days, and that would have given you your monthly revenue for that year.
That's great. And, and the numbers you used, like Sioux Falls and Rapid City and St. Paul, what were those again?
So Rapid City in the month of March was at 39, Sioux Falls, I believe, was at 48, and St. Paul was at 27.
Thank you.
And that, that's not to say that their average rates that they were charging for their rooms are probably more in that $70 to $95 range, just depending on. And that varies by day of the week, too. So they're going to charge more on weekends than they will during the day.
Thank you.
Not very excitable today. So, which is fine. So, and as it relates to online sales tax, or online sales, obviously, we don't have a lot of, a lot of track record, because this just started with Supreme Court decision in the last year or two. And then we didn't have much visibility, because it was either you'd have to remit the use tax, or it just wasn't collected, or whatever. But do we have any idea with the data that we're collecting? We see it continuing to grow pretty quickly. Is there any, any analysis that's been done in terms of how much of that is, you know, is it, is it close to a one-for-one that for the increases in online, that the brick and mortar locally is going down or are not increasing, and we're just basically trading one for the other versus just total organic growth?
You know, so that, that's a good question. I think one way you can look at it is, you know, okay, so what are people buying online? Are they buying clothes? Are they buying, so you conceptualize that they're probably most likely buying retail and apparel, I think would probably be your most likely things that you're purchasing online. I don't know, I'm going off my own activity of what we tend to buy online. You know, but for some people, it's groceries as well, but I, I don't think that's typically here. Now, if you go back to the industry level, and I don't know if we have apparel on there. So if you look at department store and general merchandise stores, so these are, you're talking about your Walmarts, your Targets, your big-box retailers, just your general and department stores. If you look at the month of February, they were still growing at 2%. On January, they were up 17%. So from that respect, bricks and mortar, you might interpret was doing okay, because that should not include the remote retail stores as part of that, is my understanding. I don't think we have apparel up there. Apparel's been up and down, they, they got hit pretty hard in the early part of the pandemic, made some recovery toward the latter parts, and then I think retrenched a little bit here over the last couple of months as Christmas has passed. But so I, I guess if we looked at some of those, and I know that was one of the things that we shared when we emailed out the, the monthly report, apparel should be on there. I would look at those, because they shouldn't include a lot of the remote retailer sales that are going on. And if you're seeing growth there, you know, obviously, they're losing some of it, it's just how much are they losing? Is it growth, or are they actually retracting?
Yeah, obviously, it's probably almost impossible to know. And I mean, full disclosure, I do both, including plenty of Amazon. So I mean, you know, and at least answer the question, what do you buy online? For me, everything. It runs a gamut of stuff. But yeah, I would just be curious to know. I mean, some of these increases could be even more, potentially, you know, so you don't know. But it, it would be kind of a fascinating question, are, are people trading one for the other and staying that way at the expense of our brick and mortars, which are, you know, it's important to keep those going? Yeah.
I would add one more thing to that, though. But you, I also, I think it's hard to gauge the stimulative check events that are occurring, and how much of that is translating into, to buying that might not have occurred previously. So I mean, for people that receive the, the stimulus payments, are they going out and doing a lot of retail shopping that, you know, is feeding that growth? That's probably not, you know, an ongoing or continued growth.
Sure, yeah, I suppose with lots of one-time money churning around in the economy, it's hard to gauge that, too. Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right. Well, we're going to move on to public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak for up to five minutes on anything we talked about today, please come forward. Seeing none? Have a good evening. This meeting is adjourned.